Good evening. Welcome to the September ninth City Council meeting. Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and just for all.
Roll call of the members. Counselor Argenzio.
Here.
Here. Counselor Janino is absent. Counselor Garino Sawaya.
Here.
Here. Counselor Haas.
Here.
Here. Counselor Herramio.
Here.
Here. Counselor Kelly.
Here.
Here. Counselor McKenna.
Here.
Here. Counselor Novoselski is absent. Counselor Silvestri.
Here.
Here. Counselor Zambudo.
Here.
Here. And Council President Cogliandro. Here. Quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of August twenty-sixth. Calendar item number three, unfinished business, motion presented by Counselor Herramio that the mayor direct the fire chief to conduct a cost and feasibility analysis to add a twenty-four-seven emergency response ambulance, and that should read, I'm sorry, that was a typo, EMS slash EMT responder to be housed under the police department.
Counselor Herramio.
Mr. Chair, Mr. President, thank you. Sorry, I was missing last time. I got a little bit of the coronavirus and didn't want to get anyone else sick. This should read EMS, EMT, and this should read Revere Fire Department, not Revere Police Department, so I apologize for that typo. You know, I think we've heard a little bit about, and I see the fire captains here, so very excited to hear. Maybe he doesn't want this, maybe they do, but we've definitely heard from residents about the need for more emergency apparatus and infrastructure in our city, and I would love to hear from the captain who's here to speak on this, to see if this is something they need or want, and if not, then that's okay, but if it is something they need or want, it'd be great, I think, for our residents to have and for the mayor to help us out with this feasibility study. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Captain O'Hara.
All right. My name's Kevin O'Hara, President, Revere Firefighters Local nine-two-six. I'm here to rise, speak against the motion, and simply because we got the Revere Fire Department who provides all emergency services in this city. We're here always on scene within forty-eight minutes. We provide the same level of care as any Catawba unit out there, any ambulance that shows up, and this is a, now, we spoke on this issue back in November in 2023 when the chief and the Catawba company was here, and, you know, this isn't just a problem in Revere, Massachusetts. This is a problem throughout the country. Now, Counselor, I don't know if you're aware how it works in New York City, but, you know, because everybody calls nine-one-one, nine-one-one for everything, you know, in New York City, what they do is they'll, they'll break down the call for you. They'll say, hey, what's wrong? Oh, I got a back problem. Oh, back problem? Yeah, I've been in bed for three days. Okay, we'll be there in an hour and a half. So, you know, I know that, you know, every time we have a call, it takes, you know, sometimes five minutes, sometimes it takes thirty minutes, but the Revere Fire Department is always on scene, providing the same level of care that the Catawba units show up and provide, and we stay with the patient. Now, if there's an emergency that we need a paramedic to get there on scene, we call right away and we get a fly car by there, or an ambulance will be there, A-one unit will be there. We have a contract with Catawba now, and right now, we have a twenty-four-hour BLS, we have a twenty-four-hour ALS, and then certain parts of the day, I believe it's sixteen hours, we have another ALS unit. You know, there's no need to have another, an ambulance created. And another thing, too, is when you, when you call for medical aid, and if it's just a transport, that unit gets held up sometimes up to an hour, hour and a half. So, if you put, you could put fifteen of them over there. You get fifteen medicals, you're not going to have any resources. We're pulling from Lynn, we pull from Everett, we pull from Chelsea, we handle the job. We're always on scene within forty-eight minutes. It's just a ride to the hospital waiting for, and if there's an emergency that needs to get them there, we're going to prioritize it, and we're going to get them there. We've never had an issue. So, before, before I go, I'm asking that all the counselors rise to vote the motion down, do not table it, vote it down, and, you know, with the Revere Fire Department, we handle all this stuff. We talk about all this stuff. You know, that's why we have a chief, that's why we have deputies and captains. We bring up the issues. This has all been done before. We had an ambulance back in the eighties. When they got into an accident, we got Catawba in here. We know, we're in good shape. We know, we do the job, and the city's growing. We all know that, but we're always there, and we're always on time.
Thank you, Captain. Counselor Herramio.
Captain, just a question. So, so what you're saying is you would not like more potentially firefighters with an ambulance in your, in your...
No, I didn't say that. What I'm saying is, we want more firefighters, we want more...
Can I finish your question?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, sorry. Within your unit, including within your bargaining unit, I think this is just a feasibility study to study the potential of bringing you, you don't. That's what you're telling me?
Yeah, we, we done this work before.
Okay.
Yeah, just, it's gonna cost millions and millions of dollars to bring in...
So, is that a no?
It's a no, yeah, that's why I'm here.
Uh, Mr. President, motion to withdraw.
Unless there's any objections, I'd like to place this on file. That's also a no vote, essentially. Placed on file.
Thank you very much.
Captain, I'd like to suspend the rules. The firefighters are here. They have one more order of business. If we could suspend the rules, all in favor, all opposed?
Calendar item number eight, communication from the mayor's office relevant to the memorandum of agreement between the City of Revere and Revere Firefighters Local nine-two-six.
Mayor Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. President. To you, to you, through you, to your body, honorable, honorable counsel, today, I'm happy to announce that the City of Revere and Local nine-twenty-six, the Revere Firefighters, were able to strike an agreement to sign a three-year contract, MOA, and we have signed it in the mayor's office just a few days ago. As you can see, they're, they're a good bunch to negotiate with, and, but I will say, in the room, over the, over the few months of contract negotiations, we were able to reach many milestone agreements, but also making sure that we're preserving the safety for our Revere residents and our Revere visitors, and making sure that our Revere firefighters are also well taken care of. So, I wanted to congratulate the Local nine-twenty-six and the Revere firefighters, and I'd like to offer Captain O'Hara to come up here and speak.
Well, first off, I'd like to thank Mayor Keefe and the City of Revere for just simply doing what we ask, just bargaining in good faith. That's all we ask. See to the table, take the gloves off behind closed doors, bang it out, and get the work done. That's it. You know, if you have a mayor that's willing to listen to what you want, you know, he's got a budget, he's got a run and everything, we know that, but, you know, everybody's entitled, you know, to get a good contract, especially if the money's there. So, again, I thank Mayor Keefe and the City of Revere for simply just doing the right thing, bargaining in good faith. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Shall the City Council approve the memorandum of agreement between the City of Revere and Firefighters Local nine-two-six covering the period of July first, 2024, through June thirtieth of 27? Counselor Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino is absent. Counselor Garino Sawaya.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Herramio.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselski is absent. Counselor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes. The agreement has been approved.
Back to the normal order of business.
Next up is the Legislative Affairs Committee report.
Counselor Argenzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had four items before us. The first one, number twenty-four, an ordinance providing interpretation and translation services for public meetings and public documents. We look to place this on file, and I'd like a roll call to place this particular thing on, on file.
Shall the City Council place an ordinance providing for interpretation and translation services for public meetings and public documents on file? Counselor Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino was absent. Counselor Garino Sawaya.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Herramio.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna. Yes. Counselor Novoselski is absent. Counselor, Counselor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Cogliandro. Yes. This matter will be placed on file.
The next item, an ordinance further regulating short-term rentals. There was an amendment added tonight, and I would like, and we voted on it in favor. I would like a roll call to look on this favorably as amended.
Ordered on a second reading as amended. Ordered on a third and final reading as amended. Roll call for engrossment and ordainment.
Shall the City Council approve an ordinance further amending short-term rental regulations as amended? Counselor Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino is absent. Counselor Garino Sawaya.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Herramio.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Novoselski is absent. Counselor Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes. The ordinance is engrossed and ordained.
The third item, Mr. President, was a communication from the DEI Director relative to an ordinance establishing rules and regulations for the display of flags in the use of City Hall. The committee chose to amend this, and we looked upon it favorably, and we would like a roll call to look on this favorably as amended. Excuse me, to move to a public hearing.
Do we need a roll call to do that? Then let's put this in a public hearing.
The fourth and final item was a communication from Veteran Services relative to an ordinance establishing regulations for veterans' memorial polls. We put an amendment on this, and we would like to move this to a public hearing.
Move to a public hearing.
Thank you.
Calendar item number nine, presentation from the Chief of Planning and Community Development relative to Revere's municipal aggregation plan.
Mr. Skarowski.
Good evening, Counselors. Tom Skarowski, Chief of Planning and Community Development. And I am here for the moment everyone here has been waiting for, to talk about the municipal aggregation plan for the City of Revere. So, in October of 2022, this council put forward a authorization for us to initiate the process to move towards municipal aggregation. Am I doing something wrong? Getting some feedback? Okay. And so, over about an eighteen-month period since then, we've been waiting out sort of the market dynamics. The energy market's been tricky, but now we feel like we're in a good position to move forward with a formal application to the DPU. The first step to doing that was selecting a consultant who would work with us through this pretty complicated process, which we have folks from the Mass Power Group here tonight with us to talk further about exactly what this program entails and what it'll mean for Revere residents. And I'm going to give the bulk of the time to them. I know we have a lot of things to talk about tonight, but just in short, we're really excited about the opportunity for this project to create cost-effective energy supply for Revere residents, and if they choose to do so, also have a very green energy component for folks that want to remove their carbon footprint. So, I'm going to leave it to Marlena and Paul from the Mass Power Group to talk through the whole process. I'm going to pull up a quick PowerPoint here in so doing. If you could just be patient with me for one minute.
Yeah, is it, how do we know if it's protecting? So, it's not up yet?
Do we know if this is working?
Yeah, it's all investigated.
Okay.
It's all good.
I'm not seeing the signal.
Should I go underneath and see?
All right, thank you.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name's Marlena Patton. I live up in Beverly. I'm not a Revere resident. I'm with Mass Power Choice. My colleague, Paul Gromer, is also here. We're the consultants hired by the city to help with this electricity program, and I'm tonight going to take you through what I will try to keep as brief as possible as a presentation about the program. And I will just go to the next slide quickly to describe a little bit more about why I'm here. So, as you just heard, there's a regulatory component to getting electricity programs like this launched. One of the steps is, we have to make a document called an aggregation plan available for public comment for thirty days. So, tonight, we're kicking off a thirty-day public comment period for this document. The aggregation plan is the governing document for this electricity program for the city. It's written for regulators. It's not written for the public, but this presentation is for the public. So, it's taken really the core of how the program will work and put it in the shape of some slides. So, and as it says, public comments are accepted until October ninth. So, let's see. All right, so what is it? Revere Power Choice is the name of the program. It's a municipal electricity aggregation program, which is a mouthful. If that leaves you as confused as the dog on this slide, you can think about it as a form of group electricity buying, which is what it is. It's also a municipal, regulated alternative to the electricity offers we all get in the mail and over the phone and sometimes at our door. Why participate? There are a few key benefits for consumers in Revere. New choices for the electricity supply part of your national grid bill is one of the big benefits. This program only impacts the electricity supply part of your bill. It doesn't impact any other part of it, but it will give you three new choices for that part of the bill. Another big benefit is stable prices. You all remember a couple years ago when national grids prices swung very, very high at the beginning of the Ukraine war. That's because national grids prices change every six months. Revere is going to sign a long-term fixed-price contract, so you will not have those types of seasonal swings. With that, there is also the potential to get a price that is lower than national grid's price. Most communities that have programs like this do see some savings, and UMass Amherst put out a report not too long ago that details this. I'm obligated, though, to say we can't guarantee savings, and that's because, as I said, national grids prices are always changing, and Revere's going to have a fixed-price contract. The third big benefit is consumer protections, which is what makes these programs different from a lot of those private offers. A chief consumer protection is that you can leave this program at any time with no fee or penalty. I like to say out front that Revere Power Choice is not going to be a replacement for national grid as your electric utility. If you live in Revere, you will have national grid as your electric utility because they own the poles and the wires. But what you can change is your electricity supplier, which is the company that puts electricity on the grid for you. There are actually three ways in Massachusetts to choose your electricity supplier. The first is to have national grid be your supplier, so that means they're providing you with two services. They're delivering your electricity, like I said a minute ago, and also they're going to buy it and make sure it gets put on the grid for you. When you have that, that's called basic service, and when you have their basic service price for the supply part of your bill, that's the price that changes all the time, and that swung really high a few years ago at the beginning of the Ukraine war. Your second option is you sign one of those private contracts with one of those companies that's always marketing to us. When you do that, national grid is still your utility, they're still sending you the bill, and you're still calling them when the power goes out, but when they calculate your bill, they're going to use the price from that company to calculate the supply charge piece of your bill. And the third option is if the City of Revere signs a contract with one of those companies instead of you, but you get to benefit from it. In that case, national grid is still your utility, they're still sending the bill, you're still calling them if the power goes out, but when they calculate your bill, they're going to use a Revere price for the supply charge on your bill. That is what aggregation is, and that's what Revere Power Choice is going to be. This is a picture of what I was just describing. This is basic service. So, on the left, we have national grid providing two services, supply and delivery. This is the same picture, but when an aggregation like Revere Power Choice is up and running. The right two-thirds of this picture are exactly the same as the previous one. National grid is still delivering your electricity. There's no interruption in the flow of electricity to your home. There's no change in your billing. It's just on the far left, we put the supply in a different color because the city's going to sign a contract with a different company to put electricity onto the grid for everybody. Now, I mentioned at the beginning that one of the big benefits of this program is new choices. There will be three. There's going to be a basic choice, which is the one you're going to get if you don't make any, any other choice. It's going to be the cheapest one in the program. But as you heard earlier, you're going to have two options that you can choose, where if you want to buy more of your electricity from clean renewable sources, you're going to be able to make that choice. All three options are going to have long-term fixed prices, which is different, as I said before, from national grid, where the prices change every six months. Your bill's not going to look very different once this program's up and running. You're going to see a change where they list your supplier name, and then the price that's used to calculate your electricity supply charge will change. But otherwise, you're not really going to see a lot of changes as a consumer. This program will be very invisible and seamless. National grid is still going to deliver your electricity. You're still going to call them if the power goes out. They're going to send your bill. You're going to pay them however you normally pay them, and you won't get any additional bills as a result of this program. And importantly, if you're eligible for any discounts from national grid, like a low-income discount or fuel assistance, you'll continue to get that discount with no change. Now, participating is going to be easy for most customers in Revere, and that is because all programs like this in the state work with an automatic enrollment model, all of them, and there are about two hundred now. Specifically, that means anybody with national grid's basic service, meaning you didn't sign a private contract, would be eligible for automatic enrollment when the program launches. If your account's in that category, you'll get a notice in the mail from the city bearing the city's seal. If you don't see the city's seal, it's marketing from somebody else. So, it's bearing the city's seal before it happens with all the pricing information and information about how not to participate if you don't want to participate. Because as I said at the beginning, one of the consumer protections in this program is that you don't have to participate, and you can leave anytime. That includes preventing yourself from being enrolled if you don't want to be, but you can also try the program and opt out later. Now, some common questions. What if you don't have national grid's basic service? What if you did sign a private contract? What then? Your account is not going to be automatically enrolled, and it shouldn't be. You have a private contract, but you can choose to enroll. You'll just have to take a step to do it. It just won't happen automatically. You can call, or you can fill out a web form, and more information will be available closer to launch. If you have solar panels, or you participate in community solar, and you're getting credits on your bill or a payment of some kind, there's also, there's no change there. There's no connection between participating in this program and how those credits or incentive payments are calculated. They will not change. And as I mentioned, if you're eligible for a low-income discount or fuel assistance, there's no change. You continue to receive those benefits, and if you have national grid's budget plan, it continues to apply to your entire bill with no change. The timeline is about a year. We're still at the beginning in the development process. The next step is submitting this document, the aggregation plan, to the Department of Public Utilities for review. That'll take a few months. At the end of that process is when the city can go out to bid and get prices and figure out how much extra renewable energy is going to be included, what are the prices of these three options, and when's the program going to launch, but not until then. We can't do any of that until the state regulators approve the program. Once that happens, though, once that electricity supply contract is signed, then there will be a public education and outreach effort, which will include that mailing that I just talked about a minute ago. So, if you're a customer and you're wondering, well, when am I going to hear more about this, it's going to be about six to eight weeks before the program launches after the city signs that supply contract. You'll get that notice in the mail if you're eligible for automatic enrollment. There'll be a press release. There'll be a program website, reveredpowerchoice.com. That actually is already up and running with lots of information about how these programs work. You can go there now. There will be public information sessions and customer support, which is already available now from my company. So, this is just a screenshot of the top part of Revere Power Choice. Y'all, this is, oh, here, I'm back. There's, there's a screenshot. If you remember nothing from what I said, because it's a blur of information, remember reveredpowerchoice.com. And remember that there are public comments accepted for the next thirty days. If you want to see the aggregation plan, you can see it on the city website or at reveredpowerchoice.com. You can get a hard copy in City Hall, and you can learn how to submit written comments on the city website or at reveredpowerchoice.com. Thus, concludeth my presentation.
Thank you very much. Any counselors have any questions? Permission to speak from the chair? Thank you. Do you have any additional outreach planned for elderly people who don't necessarily know how to use a computer, or people with disabilities who can't make these meetings?
So, typically, and for Revere, we will do this for sure, there's always outreach dedicated for seniors, so a senior center outreach is, is a typical part of outreach, yes.
Excellent.
And materials and hard copy, assuming that people aren't always going online.
Thank you very much. Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. How do you, how do you guarantee someone, do you work with national grids? I just want to make sure that the people that are in the, like, budget programs that you said won't, how do you guarantee that won't change?
The, well, so the budget plan is something that people get from national grid. So, to back up, national grid continues to handle all the billing. So, they, they control the bill. This program only changes...
Don't primarily speak English.
So, the language access policy that you all discussed today, and the one we've been following within the city for a few months now, that's the, the same policy we'll use to guide our actions to make sure in translation, interpretation, and just generally outreach within marginalized populations. We're going above and beyond to make sure that this pretty complicated stuff, even in English to present, is available in multiple languages and spoken to them by trusted community partners that can get through this message.
Great, thank you. And just to be clear, the bill will still be from national grid, national grid will still serve as the deliver of the electricity?
Yes. Yeah, both of those things are true. They own the poles and the wires, so even if you didn't want to have national grid as your utility, you wouldn't be able to make that choice. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much. This will be placed on file. Just to give everybody in the audience a timeline, we have two more motions to handle, and then we'll be on to the good stuff.
On to motions, calendar item number ten, motion presented by Counselor McKenna that the mayor requests the Director of Municipal Inspections to enforce Section eight point oh-four point one hundred Sustainable Foodware and Packing by July one of twenty-five. This will give businesses ample time to comply with the ordinance for the purpose of protecting our residents from carcinogens, litter, microplastics, and the use of non-renewable fossil fuels. Additionally, the lack of enforcement of this ordinance continues to cause harm to our wildlife and our coastline. The original ordinance was passed on November fifteenth of twenty-one and was to take effect on July first of twenty-two.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, this was passed in two thousand and twenty-one...
So this was passed in 2021 by the city council, and it was stalled because of COVID. Now COVID is gone. We gave leniency to the companies that are still using polystyrene, and I talked to Mr. Wells, and Mr. Wells said, I said, what if we come up with a plan that July 1, 2025, will be the start of banning polystyrene? And he said, okay. I just want to read a little bit about polystyrene. Polystyrene is a non-biodegradable, and it takes 500 years for it to decompose. Animals do not recognize polystyrene foam as an artificial material and mistakes it for food, and it shows toxic effects after substantial exposure. In 1986, the EPA released a report that listed the polystyrene manufacturing process as the fifth largest source in the world of hazardous waste. As if the public health impact of polystyrene isn't enough, environmental, the environmental effects are substantial. So I'm asking the director to start, to look at banning polystyrene in July 2025. There are a lot of ways that people can, you can get takeout bags, they have mixed-use plastic, they have cardboard, but it, we really, I'm trying to help the environment, and I think this is one of the ways that we can do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just a little confused here. I love my colleague and--
I love you too.
But I'm a little concerned with the wording here. It says, I agree with the litter and so forth, and it says, "The use of nonrenewable fossil fuels." Is there some restriction on--
I don't-- The products are made--
Oh, so we're only talking about the products that are made with non-- Okay. I thought for some reason we were putting a restriction on using nonrenewable fossil fuels, and I don't think we can survive that. Great, okay. Thanks for the clarification.
Thank you, Counselor. Director Wells.
Good evening, Counselors. Thank you, Michael Wells, Director of Municipal Inspection, City of Revere. I haven't been in contact with Council McKenna. I just wanted to clarify why the motion was not put into effect when it was passed. When the motion was presented, the small businesses were still feeling the effects from the COVID-19 pandemic. As we know, the businesses suffered greatly during that time financially, and we did not want to put an additional impact on them with additional expenses. Then shortly after the effects of COVID, we then faced inflation. All of our businesses were faced with the increase in costs such as food and beverage, supplies, labor, utilities that we just learned a lot about, and insurances. We did not feel comfortable asking them at the time to, again, incur additional expenses during already tough times. The cost in food, wear, and packaging has nearly doubled over the past couple of years. So the same case of takeout containers they bought pre-pandemic is now they're paying double the amount today. So they are still facing, you know, challenges today as far as pricing, and we still haven't returned to normal, if you would, you know, from the pandemic as well. So my department will enforce this effective July 1, 2025. We'll begin the communication process prior in the very near future and let them know, you know, during routine inspections, we will leave correspondence for them to be able to make that change over as of July 1.
Thank you, Director Wells. Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Wells, do you have a price that that will impact these businesses? Like, is it going to be, is it a major impact, that financial--
As we know, you know, even from a residential point of view, you know, what our expenses have done at home, right? So the same thing has been done in the business world as well. Whether, you know, some restaurants are just fully takeout, you know, they don't have dine-in service, so all of their stuff is paper, plastic, to-go. We have a, you know, City of Revere does have a plastic bag ordinance in effect, you know, we follow up on that during all of our routine inspections. I can be driving down Broadway and I see people walking down the street with plastic bags, and my head goes, right? So during COVID, you know, prior to COVID, we were about 95% effective on our plastic bag ordinance. Then COVID hit, and the rules kind of all went away during that time. Plastic bags came back, and we're still struggling to get back to compliance with plastic bags. So it'll be a challenge, but nothing that we can't handle. But yes, the prices are definitely higher than, you know, a small styrofoam container that people take home, typically put it in their fridge and throw it away on trash day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I was the maker of the motion for plastic bags to ban plastic bags, and it's made a significant difference in Revere. You don't see them in the trees anymore, you don't see them in the streets, they're not in our oceans anymore, and we have to be considerate of, we're living, you know, we're a coastal community and a marshland community. So we're surrounded by water, and we're surrounded by wildlife. And if we can help, help this environment, just to spec, then we're doing our job. And I understand polystyrene was passed in 2021, okay? And then we waited because of COVID. And I'm giving them one year. We did fine with going from plastic bags to paper bags. We did fine. Yeah, people were moaning and groaning, but we did fine. And you know what? We'll do fine with this, too. You know, people will come up with alternatives. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors wishing to speak? On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 11, motion presented by Counselor Zambudo that the mayor request a representative from the United States Postal Service to appear before the city council to address widespread and ongoing delivery problems. Seemingly, all mail, even local mail to Revere, whether sent certified or not, is not delivered timely or is lost. Several city hall departments are at the receiving end of complaints from residents who are not receiving their mail from city hall, which in turn causes inefficiencies in terms of lost time. As an example, mail with a postmark of August 15 of '24 was received by recipients with a local Revere address on September 3.
Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. This motion really speaks for itself. I think everybody knows that they're not getting their mail. I mean, it's been, it's been quite a while now, and I almost don't even look in my mailbox anymore, except that I know these bills are overdue and they should be there. Anyways, maybe we can get a representative up from the federal government here to at least give us some hope that it might get back to maybe not normal, but a little better than we're suffering right now, because it's ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I definitely support this motion. I've talked to several seniors. Even when I worked at the senior center, a number of seniors have reached out and said that they hadn't received their mail for days and days. And I think with the mailbox break-ins, a lot of senior residents are nervous to even mail checks to, you know, if it's a family relative, if it's a relative for a birthday party, or mail a National Grid check. A lot of the seniors are nervous to put their checks in the mail now. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is a great motion, Counselor Zambudo. I've gotten plenty of calls asking where the mail was, could I do something? And no, we can't do anything, but, you know, but this is a great motion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Argenzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an excellent motion, Counselor Zambudo. I know up on the hill where I live, I experienced it myself right across from city hall, we've suffered with this for probably two years. You'd go days and days without mail, and then maybe on a Sunday night, you'd get some big delivery. It has improved over the last few weeks, but I definitely am in favor of this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 12, motion presented by Council President Cogliandro that the mayor, chief of police, and superintendent of schools begin exploring the feasibility of hiring a security company and/or adding more student resource officers to Revere High School to help combat the ongoing and worsening issue in and around RHS. Further, that the mayor, chief of police, and superintendent report their findings to the city council within 30 to 60 days.
Permission to speak from the chair? A few things before we get started. Other councilors up here have wanted to be on these motions or file similar motions, and at this time, I'd like to invite anybody else to be on the motions, this one and the next one with me, if you would like to. If you would not like to, just let me know, otherwise we'll do the entire council. Madam Clerk, if we could make the motion, the maker of the motion is the entire city council, please.
Mr. President, sorry, you could remove me from these.
Almost the entire city council, please, thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Welcome, teachers, educators, thank you so much for being here. I stand with you. Most of you know my mother, Doreen DiRienzo, she worked with a lot of you, and I understand secondhand what you're going through, so thank you for being here tonight. With that said, I do want to be very clear that on the agenda tonight are two motions. One is regarding safety and security in our schools. You will all be welcome to speak, you have my word. Also about, we have a metal detector motion, if you want to speak on that. I understand there are still contract negotiations going on, and there is an issue with summer payments to people. I understand that. If anyone knows me, you know that I like to follow the rules, and we are not really allowed to speak off topic. However, since so many of you organized and showed up, I will respect that. If you would like to send somebody up to speak on that matter, you will be able to do so. Yes, I also want to clear a couple of things up before we get started. We've been hearing for the last couple of days since this came that the council should be staying in its lane, that these are school issues. And I want to be very, very, very clear to the city and everybody else that this is a public safety issue, and this is well within the purview of the city council. I wanted to clear that up. Thank you. And I also want to clear this up. This is not, these motions are not my idea. I serve you. And most of you know I have conversations with parents every day, and I've spoken to quite a bit of them, and these are the concerns of the people that I speak to, students, teachers, and parents. This is, this motion was filed by me for them, and now through the whole city council. So with that said, I'd like to open up the floor to city councilors. Anyone wishing to speak? Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. I solely support the feasibility in the search of more public safety in the school, and we need to hear the calls from the staff and the teachers inside the buildings. And at first, I got to be honest, I was having issues and fighting back and forth with this, and I, so I reached out to school, like, resource officers and psychiatrists and therapists, because I was looking for an answer that I wasn't finding. And the answer that I thought they were going to support and not looking at these, they were suggesting just the opposite, and that we really have to do something, and it not only protects the students, but it protects the teachers as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. As a Revere public school, high school teacher, working for 33 years at Revere High School, I taught art and photography to juniors and seniors. In December of 2012, the Sandy Hook shooting took place. We were called by the principal to go down to the library, and we were told if any kids would like to talk about it, to talk to them about it. The students came into my class, they asked me if we could talk about it, I said yes. One student said to me, Ms. McKenna, do you have a plan? I said, yes, I do have a plan. I says, I have a darkroom and an adjoining closet, and I said, I'll put you in that darkroom and closet and lock the doors behind you, which were metal doors. So one boy raised his hand and said to me, and these are 16, 17, and 18-year-old kids, okay? They're not kids anymore, they're young adults. One boy raises his hand and says to me, can we try it? And I said, absolutely. So we formed a line, and we went into my darkroom and my closet, and I locked the door behind them. And I asked them afterwards, do you feel safe? They said, yes, but they're scared, no matter what's going on. No matter what the kids are saying, we feel prison, we feel prisoners if we have metal detectors, no matter what we're, they say, kids are still scared. We're talking about 12 years ago, 12 years ago, and we're in a different climate, angry climate right now, that is, anything is possible. So we need to protect our teachers, we need to protect our schools, we need to protect the kids, we need to protect our city, we need to protect everybody, and we need to do it now. We need to take notice now. So I stand with you, teachers, whatever you need, I am here for you. Thank you.
Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will say, I've always been a fan of the school resource officers, they do great work. I wish we could have one at every school and maybe even two at the high school, two or three at the high school, but they do fantastic work, but it doesn't make sense to have someone at the beach month school, they get a call to go to the Hill School on the other side of the city, they get stuck in traffic, or I think every school should have a designated SRO. And I will say, I've talked to a lot of parents the last few weeks, and some teachers, some former teachers, and, you know, I have a son in kindergarten, my daughter is now in preschool, I have two nephews at the high school, and I think the kids deserve to be safe, the teachers deserve to be safe, and, you know, the city should work together, we should work together with the school committee and the Revere Police and come up with a plan, a plan where everyone feels safe, and you can go to bed at night not worrying about your kids. Last week was the first time I actually thought about my two kids being at the same school, and, you know, you just really think of things and everything going on in the world, but everyone deserves to be safe at school. And hopefully, we can come up to some kind of solution where people feel at ease and they're proud to go to Revere schools and they're proud to call Revere home. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to echo what Counselor McKenna said. I fully support everything that she said, and I agree with it. We absolutely need change, there is no doubt about it. Children, as well as staff, need to go to school and feel safe, and we have a responsibility to make sure that happens. And I'm going to go further to say, if we can't provide for that basic level of security and feeling of safety for our students and our teachers, we have no business building a $500 million high school. And I know some people won't want to hear that, but we need to start there. We need to start there. And I also heard an argument right after the incident saying, you know, this only involved 1% of the student population, so, you know. And I got really upset when I heard that argument, because that may be only 1% of the population, but it affected not only the entire school, it even, it affected the city, it affected the surrounding neighborhood. So we, whatever the, and I'm not an expert by any means, but whatever the solution is, whether it be added security, metal detectors, more involvement of more parents, sub councils that may be created, that have parents actually on the sub councils, there are a lot of things that we can be doing, robo-calls to be sent out about meetings to alert parents to, so that they can attend and make sure that they get the notification of meetings. I know that in the tragedy that occurred in Georgia, it was, I heard that staff members actually had panic buttons on their lapels, and it alleviated and circumvented the process of dispatch and even calling 911. When the button was pressed, the local police knew that they were to respond directly to the school without question. And they said that that, they instilled that policy just about a week before the tragedy, and they like, they believed that it did save lives. So these are things that we need-- So, these are things that we need to be thinking about in the day and age that we're in. And I also want to echo what President Cogliandro said. This is well within the city council's purview, and, you know, we're not going outside of our lane here. So, we can help to make things happen, and I hope that we do. Thank you.[619.16][619.16](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Yeremyo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Really appreciate you putting these motions together. I have, one of them I just straight up can't say I agree with. I do have some concerns about the other, which mentions a private company. You know, I really respect our, our men and women in uniforms, and it concerns me, as someone who deeply believes in the labor movement, that we would be considering outsourcing these jobs. And so, and I know that the school committee has already allotted some money for hiring more SROs, and so, I question whether we can change this to reflect that we are only hiring the union members in the police department if we are doing more of these SROs. As for the teachers in the room, can I say, you know, I'm a public school product, and I understand the vicarious trauma that you may all be experiencing as a result of the fights that happened at the high school, and it saddens me that it is happening the way that it is happening. I also have heard you over the last four years, talking a lot about the well-being of our kids post-COVID, and the intricacies under which they have come out of the COVID environment, and the difficult home economic, social, and even mental health outcomes they've been struggling with. And I know there's a continued need around the Commonwealth, not just here in Massachusetts and Revere, for additional supports around that area. So, would encourage the school committee, who I actually do agree should have the purview of this conversation, but I understand why they might not, I encourage the school committee to consider additional funding for mental health resources and other sort of economic and workforce development resources for the young people in their buildings. I think that it's very easy to think about children as this, this agent that does not exist within the context of their own homes or their own communities, and we can easily be reactive and inadvertently treat them as criminals, and/or, or just think of them as other than human, when they themselves may be struggling with things that go beyond the job of the teacher, that the teacher unfortunately is being forced to do with strapped resources. And so, I do want to uplift our, our teachers from that perspective, and of course, they know I stand in solidarity with them. I also, like I mentioned, just, like I just mentioned, stand in solidarity with the men and women in blue, who I don't believe we should be outsourcing their jobs from, and we should be hiring direct SROs who have the training. I know that we have a lot of great programs drawn out of, by some of our local police officers. I see Joe Singer in the room, among others. I know that that stuff is working, creating community, building a school, a community around the school is what's going to work to address our violence concerns, as well as addressing some of the socioeconomic issues that folks are facing. And I'll end by saying, of course, yeah, that I stand in solidarity with the teachers. I know they're negotiating contract, and they can count an ally from, with me to be at an action, a picket, whatever it is.[862.13][862.13](APPLAUSE). And this is entirely off-script, but of course, we know that the work that the teachers are doing is building the whole student, and that, that the work that the teachers are doing is building a whole student, and that testing does not measure neither the ability of the teacher or the student.[891.01][891.01](APPLAUSE). So, if you're following the election this year, vote yes on 3.[899.98][899.98](APPLAUSE). 2, 2! Sorry, sorry. Also, yes on 3 for me, but if you're following the election this year, vote yes on 2.[910.01][910.01](APPLAUSE).
To, to all the news stations in the room, if you could edit that last 10 seconds out for Counselor Yeremyo, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Just to touch on a couple of things really quickly, if I may have the leeway from the council. Yes, there is a fourth SRO budgeted in the school, in the school department's budget. However, I think it was said in the Safety and Security Subcommittee by school committeeman John Kingston, if the SRO is in the gymnasium at the high school, and there's a fight on the third floor, very difficult for them to get there in a timely fashion. That's why I want a security company, trained security company. If we do that within, great, we could even petition to hire Revere residents. But I have been doing security for 24 years. I understand the importance of having a good security personnel in, in the building. So, we need more eyes, more ears, more hands in, in training if these people need to intervene. That's why I want security companies inside the buildings. These are people that can also talk to these children. We're not looking for people to walk around with their chest puffed out. We want people that are going to engage with the students, that are going to keep an eye on things, that are going to be able to observe and report, and, like I said, intervene if necessary. Thank you. Counselors Ambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to thank you for your three motions, and I support them all. This was very, this latest incident was very disturbing, and you were correct. Public safety is our, our purview here. I built my career on public safety. I came here 25 years ago, and with the goal to build a police station, because we had one next door here, that the prisoners used to break out by banging on the door and, and walk away, not to mention that the, the rain would fall on the evidence room and destroy all the evidence for, and anyways, the bottom line is that this is about security. It's about consequences, though. Somebody said something about, you know, 1% or whatever it is. The bottom line is, there's got to be consequences. I had a little...[1045.29][1045.29](APPLAUSE). That might be, that might be the first time in my career I got applause up here, but that's okay.
Especially from teachers.
So, but the, yeah, especially for teachers, because I, I fought against the taking a billion dollars off the tax rolls, but we'll leave that alone. The bottom, the bottom line is here that I do support, of course, I support the police officers. I, I built my career on that, and I still do. However, I also agree with you that we probably need to supplement these, these offices with private security. You're not going to, we don't have a budget, we won't have a budget, that could put enough of these offices into schools to make it safe. So, I, I think that's a great idea that you have, and I did, I did speak with the mayor, and, and I, I do hear that there are consequences being dealt out here, and, and I'm, I'm very pleased with that. Again, I support you 100% on these motions, and, and it's not about trying to, trying to circumvent our police department. That's the last thing I would ever do, and, and I know that's the last thing you would ever do. So, we're going to move forward from here, and we're going to have safe schools here, and, and we're going to do the right thing, and, and the people that step out of line are going to pay for that. Thank you.[1139.65][1139.65](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, counselor. And if, and if I may, just one moment, counselors, my apologies. We don't have the police presence, we don't have enough police officers to fulfill what we would need to, to protect the schools properly. And we all know the conversation, there's not many people that want to be police officers right now. We're struggling, we're struggling to have good technical equipment in the room. We're struggling to, our police officers are working overtime, some of them barely see their families. They are amazing. We have an amazing police department doing everything they can. If we had more police officers, we could absolutely staff these schools better, but the reality is that right now, we don't, and we can't be taking people off the street to do that. We, we need, we need police officers everywhere. This is why a security, trained security would be a great alternative to the SRO. Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for the leeway. I, I just, I just want to be clear, as, as you just stated, this is in no way, shape, or form looking to take jobs away from police officers. If we would like whoever we hire, let's unionize them. However we keep this group of people in this room safe, that's what we need to do. Two years ago, I filed a motion to, for the city to, to put money towards two SRO officers, two additional. I think school committee John Kingston member did $140,000 this year. I also, last year, the Home for Little Wanderers, who does the reach, home outreach for our students, was actually not able to fulfill their duties anymore, because they needed to, to get a contract signed. And I put the motion forward to get that $40,000 contract signed. So, we are doing the things that we need to do in, in to get this stuff done, and, and something still broke. So, if we got to think outside the box, and that's all we're asking to do, is to, to look into feasibilities at this, and, and that's the way we're going to get this done, is thinking outside the box, looking at ideas to keep our teachers and our students safe, and that's what we have to do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, counselor.[1273.24][1273.24](APPLAUSE). Counselor Agenzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief, because I'm looking forward to hearing what everybody in the audience has to say. Counselor Silvestri and I, a couple of weeks ago, were invited to a meeting in Beverly, regional meeting of all the teachers, and we listened for about an hour and a half. And, and this is a regional problem. We listened about safety in the schools, we heard, we listened about problems with their contracts, and it's a serious issue, and it's a serious issue regionally. So, I, they have my full support, and I'm hoping we can come up with some answers, and I'm certainly looking forward to what everyone has to say here tonight. Thank you.[1313.11][1313.11](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Garino Sawaya.
Thank you, Council President. I agree with Council President Cogliandro, as we do not have enough police officers. Perhaps, instead of looking at security companies, we could think of rehiring the auxiliary police that we no longer have in the city of Revere, or also look into hiring retired police officers who are looking for work again. I have to say that the public safety is within our purview, and I was actually insulted when I was spoken to yesterday about it, saying that it wasn't part of the city council. It is part of the city council. It should not stay within the school committee, because this involves every single person who lives in the city of Revere, every student that goes to school, every teacher that is in Revere. So, I was insulted by hearing something like that. And then, the other thing is, every one of my constituents that has called me has had the same issue. They're worried about their kids in the school, and we will do whatever it takes to make sure that these kids and the teachers are safe in Revere. Thank you.[1401.41][1401.41](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, counselor. And I also just want to say that I know I can probably speak for some of the other councilors, but my goal and our goal, and I know Counselor Kelly and I showed up to that Subcommittee the other day, we want to work together with the school committee. This isn't us telling them what to do, or vice versa. This is all of us coming together for the greater good of this community. So, I want to be clear on that, and to the school committee members in the room, thank you for being here today.[1431.01][1431.01](APPLAUSE). With that said, I don't know, I would like to get just a raise of hands of the amount of people that would like to speak tonight. Oh, that's not that bad. Okay.[1447.71][1447.71](LAUGHTER). So, what I'd like to do, I know we have school committee members here that, that would like to speak. Vice Chair Monterosso, I'd invite you to come on up and, and speak, and then anybody who would like to speak or say something, if you could please kind of filter to the center, so that I can get my eyes on you, okay? Yes, please. Thank you.
Can you hear me? Yes. Thank you, Counselors, so much for having me. My name is Jagat Monterosso, I live at 43 Haddon Street, and I'm the vice chair of the Revere School Committee. And before you all, as your constituents, and as a former teacher, speaking on behalf of myself, only on these two motions, not on the negotiations. Respectfully, I urge you to vote no on the two motions regarding the private security and expiration of metal detectors. Instead, I urge you, like you said, to be a partner with us, and consider more constructive ways in providing support. For example, help us find funding to increase transportation, so students aren't idle on Beech Street, because they have to walk two miles home. Fund the city-sponsored after-school program to provide more opportunities. Become a mentor to a group of high school seniors and freshmen through our Big Brother Big Sister program. Help create more partnerships with organizations like MGH or ROKA, so that we bring in more resources. Or even create a citywide campaign on parent engagement, to help us have even more parents involved in their child's education. The district is already exploring many ways to expand our partnership with the police department, and I won't repeat all that you've said, because we agree, we have funding, we want more SROs, but we can't find them. But we are working on other ways to expand them, like the auxiliary unit, making sure that the behavioral unit can be housed permanently in the high school, so that we can provide resources. We all agree that violence is unacceptable, and I truly do thank you for thinking of every aspect of the community in your role. However, I think that there are other ways that we can start this conversation, before we start talking about private security firms installing metal detectors, because that also won't make students feel safe. I know I won't feel safe if I have to go into a high school and walk through a metal detector. So, thank you for all you do, and please consider other alternative ways to support us in the district. Thank you.[1566.03][1566.03](APPLAUSE).
I just want to be clear on a couple of things. The first thing is that this motion asks for a feasibility study to be done. This is in no way us telling anyone that we need to put security in these schools. This is us asking to find out how feasible that would be. So, there is nothing official coming from the council saying that that's going to happen. And also, as far as funding, the school department tells us what they need every year. They really do. So, if you guys want to budget for something, even if we disagree with it, we can't say no, because if we cut from the budget one year, we have to make up for the shortfall the next year by law. So...
Just a clarification, to reconfirm, I'm speaking for myself and my own constituents, and as an elected official, not on the whole committee.
Thank you, Vice Chair Monterosso. Anyone else from the school committee wishing to speak? The school committeeman Kingston.
John Kingston, 140 Winterbav. I speak as a private citizen and not a member of the school committee. The only thing I'm really here to talk about, I don't, I don't disagree that it's not in your purview. There was a fight on Beech Street, middle of the street, it was videoed. That's not on school grounds. And whatever help I can get to help me do my job from you folks, I'm more than happy to take it. So, I don't, I don't, I don't have any problem with what's being done here, and that's why I'm here. The only thing I did want to say, and all due respect to City Council Mike Silvestri, we were told by the superintendent that the Home for Little Wanderers project, and when I first saw it, I said, what are we doing with that? They, they offer a counseling service, and, and this is my take, this is what we were told, so if I'm, I'm an error, I apologize. We were told somehow it fell out of the city budget, and would we pick it up? And we did immediately. I, I think you need to realize a couple of things. One, there's a shortage of teachers across the country. It's not just in Revere, it's not just in Massachusetts. That's number one. Number two, there's a shortage of police officers. My son is one. My son is a, is a sworn police officer in the city of Revere. I know how many double shifts he works sometimes, because they don't have enough people. We did put a, a fourth SRO in the budget. Unfortunately, we can't fill it. I don't blame the chief for that, it's just the way things are right now. The state police, Boston, everyone's short officers, so no one has any extra officers to give us. What I suggested at the safety meeting was for us to pay, either on detail or overtime pay, an extra officer to have at the high school, and just to be in the community. If there's an officer at the high school, think about it, logistically, someone can run to the Lincoln, literally run. You could run to the Hill, you could run to the Rumney. So, I think having an extra officer, and I don't really care about the bill, I figured it out, it's $52,000. If I sleep a little better, the school department can afford the $52,000. Again, I'm speaking, this was brought up at a meeting, so it was public knowledge, I'm not saying anything that wasn't brought up previously. That's my, that's what I would like to see, whatever the council decides, and whatever the feasibility decides, fine. But I want to clear up that we are trying to do with the councilors, we've hired a ton of social workers at the high school. That's a fact. You can look it up. It's in the budget. I'm the chair of the Subcommittee of Ways and Means, there's a ton of positions for social workers. Do we want to hire more? Yeah, we can't find them. They're very difficult to find. So, I don't think that we're not, I, I got a little upset, because I thought people felt we weren't doing our job. I insisted on keeping that fourth SRO in the budget, it was important to me, and I think we're doing our best. If the public and the chief tells me that we need metal detectors, we'll figure out a way to pay for them. I'm not a security expert, I don't know. My only problem with the security company, for me as a parent, maybe, or, you're always a parent, but my kids are older, I just worry about who the security company hires. I'd rather hire police officers on detail or overtime and... I'd rather hire police officers on detail or overtime and add the extra expense. They work for the chief, they work for us, they work for the city of Revere, and I know what I'm getting. My concern is, we hire a security company, and we didn't, maybe don't get the, you know, get a bad apple, so to speak, and we have, you know, we have an additional problem. That's all I really want to say. I actually appreciate that you've brought this up, um, I don't have a problem with it. I understand people's concerns about purview, but if someone wants to help me with a problem, I'll take the help from anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I did have a couple of questions, I don't know if there's anybody here from this administration that might be able to answer them, it doesn't look like it. Maybe I'll just ask them out loud, and they can get back to me. So, I was curious about the social workers and what type of results we're seeing from that, I was curious about that, so. I also know that we hire a lot of people as security slash translators, and I really believe that we need to start separating those two, because we absolutely... I may be a little biased, but we have excellent security at the Garfield, just saying. We do need translators, one thousand percent, one thousand percent. So, I was wondering if there was a plan to separate those two jobs. I also want to know what type of training they go through, what type of specifically security training, because I'm just going to say this, I have walked in through the front door of every single school in this city, and I've been buzzed in. Whether I get stopped or not is a whole different story if they ask me, but I have been able to enter every single building. That can't happen, that can't happen, that is unsafe. We need to find out why they're there, before they come into that building and have access to seeing people. And then, I was, I wanted to know about what, if, if maybe there's security personnel at the schools that I don't know about. So, hopefully, one of the administrators can get back to me via email, or however they'll call me, or whatever they want to do, but if it, unless there's any other comments from the council, I'd like to open it up to the public. And when you come to the microphone, if you would not mind, just please state your name and address for the record. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity, my name is Chris Kingston, I live in Tuckspree, Massachusetts, I've been a Revere educator for twenty-eight, starting my twenty-eighth year. Um, I taught one of your counselors, I refereed one of your basketballs counselor's games, I taught another counselor's son, another counselor's granddaughter, and I worked colleagues with Joanne for a number of years. My concern is this, I teach AP Government and Politics at Revere High School. I teach what you folks practice. My biggest concern from that Thursday was the video of the kids fighting in the streets. Their lack of concern and wanton disregard for what they were doing in the community has been brought into the schools. I firmly agree with the metal detectors. I am a teacher, I am not a shrinking violet, I am not a small person, I will step in and break up a fight, I've done it before, I will no longer. Weapons have been found in our building on numerous occasions over the last few years. I am not stepping into a melee to get a blade in my ribs. If I do, you'll never see me again, and you will be paying me a vast amount of money, because over the years, I have presented myself, whether it be in negotiations as a union person, or just casually to a relative that might be in the room, that the place is a mess. We have someone that worked there, I am here, I was at that safety meeting, and I heard a member of the school committee talk about the militarization of the building. If those two SROs in Georgia were not in the building, there would have been a greater calamity to tho, to that community. There is, I am a firm believer in building relationships. If our SROs, or whoever we could bring in, can build relationships with the kids, I think about what Officer Singer has done with the boxing community, what Officer Brennis has done with Charlie. I'm leaving today, and Officer Brennis is in the hallway outside the gym, throwing a tennis ball down the hallway and giving Charlie treats. That, to me, is about SROs as well, not just stepping in and breaking up fights. So, yes, there are other ways to think outside the box, there are other ways to motivate people, but the bottom line is, I want my kids to feel safe. If they can't feel safe, I can't do my job. I'll finish with this, one of the basic tenets of government is to provide safety and public order. The Massachusetts State Constitution illuminates the idea that if students are not, do not feel safe and are not protected, they struggle to learn. Never mind all of the other issues that were brought up, and they are real, but I want to feel safe, I want my kids to feel safe, and that's what I call them, my kids. And if you're not sure, ask, Juan, you were my student, you gave me a bear hug this after, this evening when I got here. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
Good evening, my name is Siobhan Keplin, I am an elementary school teacher at Garfield Elementary. I want to take a moment to thank you for paying attention and for caring. I have been in a situation in the past school year where a lockdown drill was called in the Garfield complex because of a call. One of my fifth grade students was huddled next to me, and he apologized for everything he had done wrong, and asked me to please not let him die that day. I need you to know that what you're doing right now is protecting your most vulnerable and your most precious citizens, and giving us the resources to protect them and for us to feel safe, we will pass every ounce of that on to our children, because they're ours, they're yours, but they're ours. I have taught in Revere for seventeen years, I have two small children in the North Attleboro school systems, I do, what you said about sending your children to the same building, that hit me square in the chest. I know what kind of trust is being placed in me when I sit with my seven hundred elementary school students. Sergeant Joe stepped in last year to help with a difficult situation, and he protected me. I have never felt more safe than to have him look at me and say, I got you. We need that, and if you give us that, we will give the future of Revere everything we can. Thank you.
Got it, there we are. City councilors, thank you. My name is Jane Chapin, and I live at fifteen Guild Street, Boston, Mass. I'm a seventh grade math teacher at the Rumney Marsh Academy, but I'm also the co-president of the Revere Teachers Association, and we are here, the Revere Teachers. In my position... In my position, I hear about incidents related to school safety happening all across our district. This wide lens allows me to see the patterns and the crit, and, and the critical health and safety crisis that we find ourselves in now. We are at a breaking point. Last year, we saw more incidents of emotional distress, student dysregulation, and mental health crisis among students, but we've been sounding the alarm for years. Unfortunately, the administration's response has been, and continues to be, Band-Aid approaches that treat each incident as isolated, specific to that particular school or that particular building, rather than addressing the systemic issues. This is not sustainable. Educators are doing their best every day to provide the support, but they are overwhelmed and under-resourced. As an educator, I can tell you that there is nothing more heartbreaking than going home at night and knowing you are not able to provide and meet the needs and support your students, because you're spread too thin, and you don't have the resources to do so. Experiencing this repeatedly, day after day, becomes deeply demoralizing, and it can take the joy out of doing what we absolutely love doing, teaching our students. Now is our chance to implement common sense proposals, proactive solutions as opposed to reactive solutions. The RTA educators across the district, we have worked to craft proposals that address the health and safety crisis happening in our schools. These proposals we see as preventative measures that will ultimately lead to learning conditions and the working conditions that our students deserve. Back in March, we presented our concerns and related proposals on health and safety to the school committee. We circulated a petition, which I believe was just passed out, um, to educators and community members with, received over seven hundred and fifty signatures. The following outline is what we see as common sense solutions to address the health and safety issues in our schools. First, we're asking to develop a clear protocol for reporting safety issues, whether it be emotional distress, physical abuse, whether it's towards staff or towards student. Without a fundamental system in place, where we're able to record and s, we are not able to see the full scope of the problem. We do not have an incident reporting system district-wide. Next, we need to hire more social workers and provide wraparound services to address the mental health crisis that our students are facing. When a student in your classroom is having a crisis, or something is happening, and you pick up that phone, and you go to call for support, and everyone's busy, and that's a really difficult, very heartbreaking situation to be in, and not only does it affect you and that student who's not receiving what they need, but all the students in the class. This is happening in our classrooms every single day. We need class size caps so that educators can provide the individual support that every student deserves. Additionally, we must set reasonable caseloads for psychologists, for nurses, for board-certified behavior analysts, for speech-language pathologists, for social workers. If we don't, we will not be able to retain them. There, these are a practical start to addressing the safety crisis in our school, and I just wanted to speak briefly on the motions, the resolutions that were mentioned here tonight. As for more security, we haven't discussed a proposal internally at our elected board, but there are models within districts around us, like Cambridge, where employed, unionized school safety specialists work closely with SROs and school communities, develop the kinds of restorative practices and systems that keep students and staff safe, while not inadvertently creating the school-to-prison pipeline. We hope that moving forward, RTA is included in these conversations, and that we can collaborate on solutions. Members of the council, we are here today because we have a shared responsibility in the health and safety of our students and staff, and it requires all of us to take action. Thank you.
My name is Karen Suttel, Medford, Massachusetts, and I'm a social worker at the Whalen Elementary. This mark, year marks my sixteenth year in the district. I'm here to discuss our Safe and Healthy Working and Learning Environment Proposal, which advocates for ongoing training and behavior management. Since two thousand and fifteen, I've been a Crisis Prevention Intervention, CPI, certified instructor. Revere Public Schools has adopted this platform emphasizing care, welfare, safety, and security philosophy. This philosophy is just not a set of principles, it is the foundation of creating a safe and supportive environment for everyone involved. Despite renewing my CPI certifications eleven months ago, those CPI courses were scheduled until recently. Several sessions are planned for later this month and October, but training should be a regular part of our programming. The pandemic has significantly exaggerated mental health issues and trauma on our students, underscoring the need for urgent and effective intervention and support. At the Whalen, sixteen of the twenty-two trained staff members will have expired certifications by the end of October, by the beginning of October, and seven key staff members, including an administrator and two ignite slash small learning group teachers, have yet to receive any training. It would be ideal for Whalen staff to train alongside the individuals that they work with every day. In March, another social worker and I responded to a classroom where a student was displaying unsafe and aggressive behaviors towards staff, kicking, hitting, punching, throwing items. To complicate matters, we were scheduled to have a fire drill. When the alarm sounded, the student refused to exit the building and was on the floor, kicking, screaming, and crying. We had to carry him out of the building. Once outside, students and staff watched as the student continued to hit, kick staff. It was a pretty chaotic situation. There was so much happening around us, it was really hard to focus. The student tried to run away and became more aggressive, trying to bite and spit on me, he eventually hit me in my ear. Because of the nature of the fire drill, no other trained staff members were available to assist. The district's recent announcement of hiring a hundred new staff members raises questions about the root causes of why we needed that many staff, and why they're not trained in de-escalation techniques. This training, critical training, should be part of every new hire's orientation. The lack of it leaves educators vulnerable and students at risk, emphasizing the need for protective measures. Recent incidents incidences in, of violence at Revere High School and across the district underscore the pressure and urgency of the situation. The RTA solutions are not just common sense, they're necessary. Our proposals would allow us to transition from reactive to proactive measures, and develop protocols, documentation, and reports for safety issues such as verbal, emotional, and physical abroos towards staff and other students, providing and creating a safe and supportive environment for everyone involved. Finally, I would sincerely thank City Council, City Councilor Member Juan Pablo Geralmillo for supporting our recent legislative forum. We greatly appreciate his advocacy for paid parental leave, advocate school funding, live-in ways, and safe, school safety. He stated, "I urge all stakeholders, including policymakers, community leaders, and citizens, to recognize and support these improvements. Let us work together collaboratively to discuss and address these issues with the urgency and the seriousness that they deserve." Thank you.
Thanks for, um, taking the time to hear all of us tonight. My name is Gina Garrow, I live in Somerville, Massachusetts, um, and I am a kindergarten and first grade special education inclusion teacher, and you're probably wondering, what am I doing here? So, we have to, and I think you're going to hear that a lot tonight, that we have to think of this issue of health and safety and security as much broader than just what's going on at the high school. And what we do for our youngest students has everything to do with what happens later on in that life, and that's how we have to think about it. So, I've been, I've been a, um, this is my twenty-fifth year doing this job at the Garfield Elementary School, and I'm here to speak about the lack of safety for our youngest and most vulnerable students. Most of our kindergarten students come to school and have never been to school before, have never been to daycare, have never been to preschool, and speak very little English. And I just want you to understand, if you don't know, kindergarten classes have one teacher, one teacher. So, they, these students enter a building in a class, on average, that's twenty students and one teacher. So, when students run from a classroom, which they often do, where am I? So, when they run from a classroom, or when they run out of a building, which they often do, and when they try to put their hands on other students or teachers and throw items that are dangerous, which they often do, I think you can see how this is a very serious safety concern. And this isn't just an issue that happens at the beginning of the year. It continues to occur throughout the year while we try to figure out the needs of particular students. Staff and teachers are seeing a spike in students who, due to trauma and other factors, are very dysregulated. They enter school, and we know little about them, in kindergarten at least, but there is a dangerous lack of support while social workers and teachers scramble to maintain a caring and safe environment, whoops, um, for all of our students. The teacher has to choose, do I chase after that student who's running away, or do I stay with the rest of the class? And that happens on a, multiple times a day, because there is not another adult in that classroom. And not only is it unsafe for that student, it's unsafe for the rest of the class, it's unsafe for the teacher. So, the RTA has been asking for kindergarten pares for years to address this safety concern, and it has fallen on deaf ears. In fact, just before COVID, we were told that we would receive kindergarten pares in all the classes with money from... in all the classes with money from the Student Opportunity Act funds, money that Revere was a huge beneficiary of. Revere teachers went in large numbers to marches and rallies at the State House to earn this money. And at community forums, kindergarten parers came up a lot as a priority. But then COVID came, and that money for kindergarten parers disappeared. But the need certainly didn't disappear, it has only grown. We don't want a tragedy to happen because we don't have the staff to prevent it. I am speaking now because many teachers who I work with are afraid to step forward and speak. Because what happens to students in these dangerous situations falls on the teacher. Teachers take the fall and are fired. Lack of safety is a systemic problem in this district, from the youngest to the oldest students, and it needs to be addressed seriously and seen as the priority that it is. Thanks.
Name and address, please.
Sure. My name is Shannon Linlau, and I live in Somerville. Again, thank you for allowing us all to speak today. I teach seventh grade science at the Rumney, and I would like to speak on a specific incident that happened to me last year, my first-year teaching, that I believe could have been prevented had the RTA's health and safety proposals already been in place that year. So, this was at the very beginning, the first five minutes of one of my classes. I had asked a specific student to please take a seat so we could begin, and he got in my face and yelled at me to shut the F up, C-word. I immediately called administration for support, because I had been previously told not to call his guidance counselor directly, should he be in a crisis like this, as this was happening multiple times a week. Otherwise, that would have been my first choice. Having known this student, I knew what he needed was not discipline, but a safe space to calm down and regulate his emotions, as he did have a specific disability that made it very difficult for him to regulate his emotions. Regardless, I called administration, and I was told they were all in a meeting, and unless it was an emergency, I wasn't able to be helped right now. I decided it wasn't an emergency, as similar things had happened before, and nobody was in any physical danger. I tried to gather myself and continued to teach my class while this student continued to yell profanities and use very disruptive and vulgar language. I don't remember what it was, but something profane he had said prompted me to call a second time, and I was told again, they were still all in a meeting, and I wasn't able to be helped right now. This continued until the end of class, when this student approached my desk and placed his hand underneath my stapler, about to staple his own hand, where I called a third time and said, "Please, it is an emergency." And administration did come and remove that student. Not only did that one class lose an entire class period of learning, so an entire day of science, this class was already several days behind my other classes due to similar instances. But it also was difficult for me to face that class again every day, knowing that every student had just seen me holding back tears after being demeaned in such a way. It was hard to feel in control and like I demanded respect from my students. So, I do believe that had we had, one of our proposals is therapy rooms, or like another space for the student to calm down, then it never would have escalated to the point where I lost an entire class period, and I was afraid that this student was going to harm himself. I'd also like to point out, while I do have time, that while I don't teach, the way our school is set up, I don't teach any Ls, I don't teach any English language learners. But at the Rumney, this is the first year in several years that we've had a guidance counselor that speaks Spanish. So, the students that I have in front of me every day have the most access to those services. But a large part of our student population prior to this year didn't have any meaningful access to those support services. So, even with my students having better access arguably, I was still experiencing things like this, at least weekly. So, I am asking the council to please consider our health and safety proposals, specifically those around caseloads for support staff, such as guidance counselors, social workers, school psychologists, and BCBAs. And thank you very much for your time.
I'm sure you've already seen me before. My name is Ierta Smalley. I live at 62 Shama Street in Word 5, and I'm also this year's Student Senate Chair. I'm also speaking to you. While I am the Student Senate Chair of the Revere High School, I do want to reiterate that I'm not necessarily speaking from their perspective, because as one of only two students in this room, we just heard about this. And I think that that's a glaring issue. While I do support the solidarity with the teachers, I love that you're all here, this is what a conducive democracy looks like, I want us to understand the implications of what leaving students out of the conversation can have. I want us to understand what it felt like from our perspective. Thank you. I want you to understand what it feels like from our perspective, when the fight happened, as gossip spreads, you know, people were taking videos, sharing them. It spread like wildfire, and we didn't know what was fact, and we didn't know what was myth. And that wasn't only a problem within our school that we have to work on, but was also a problem in the community. When I went to, you know, online, as one does, to see the news, or to see what, you know, adults were saying in the community, rather than adults being concerned for our health, or our mental health, or how we were feeling, I saw people calling us animals. I saw people saying that we need to be sent to military school. I saw people saying these very drastic measures. And to see that lack of solidarity with us as students, as largely the victims of these violent acts, as well as the teachers, we are at the forefront of this violence, to have that conversation being spread in the community when we weren't being actively represented and understood, that felt like a stab in the back. It sounds like what the message here today is that there is change that needs to happen, and I definitely agree. I definitely think that there needs to be more safety measures, we need to be more careful with how we go about things, and we need to make sure that we're listening to the teachers and to the staff, and we're putting money where it counts. But I also want us to be cognizant of how this process works. Because if you don't include students, who are the very subject of schools, if we don't include them in the conversation, then it's just going to constantly feel like, if there are some day metal detectors at the high school, that every time I go into that building, I'm not seen as a student, I'm not seen as a human, I'm seen as someone that needs to be stopped, or someone that needs to be frisked, or someone that needs to be, you know, analyzed, almost as they said, an animal. It doesn't feel humanizing to go into a school, or to go into a public environment and to be seen as the enemy, or as a criminal. And I don't represent the majority of Revere High School. Yes, I am elected, but that doesn't mean that I represent the demographic backgrounds, you know? And I think that we need to understand the complexity, and yes, you might not be, you know, meaning to have that influence, but there are impacts, and you have to understand. I think that at the end of the day, you need to understand the differences across the teachers, across the students, and what we believe. And if you do pass these two initiatives, I want you to include students in the process, because we deserve to be there. Thank you.
Ierta, congratulations on your chair. I would also like to invite you, as I did last year, the Student Senate was working together with the council, coming up once a month to give a presentation and be part of our process, so you are welcome to continue that at any time. Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Jones. I'm from the Garfield School. I've been teaching for 28 years there, and I want to change gears just a little bit and talk about the wellness of the building there. We've had some real bad sewage problems there, and I'm sure you've heard about it. And I want to discuss that we always have had water coming into our garage. That's not something we're not used to. We've had it for many years, it's below sea level, we know it's more like a catch basin, and it catches water, but this is different. I don't know if it's because of the buildings that have been built around the area, I don't, I'm not sure about that, but I know that what we are seeing now since then is actual sewage coming from our bathrooms, from the bathrooms, from the drains, and anywhere you see there, and it's sewage. And we all know what that is, right? And we've, so that's one problem, and we really need to have that really, really addressed. And I know that people are saying that it's been fixed, but as of when we came in August, there was still remnants of sewage near some of the drains. So, it obviously happened again over the time. So, that's one thing.
Ma'am, I don't mean to cut you off, and I gave you leeway on that, the poop coming out of the floor there, but if we could stay on security and safety.
Well, I mean, it is about wellness of the building. It's health. It's health. Another thing I wanted to talk about is the fence that aligns, that bots the Garfield School to the MBTA. I have pictures of it. It is really unsafe. I know that we have sent pictures over to, I don't know if it's the MBTA, or who has to follow up on that, but I can show you pictures, and I'm sure that you wouldn't want your children playing near this fence, with the third reel 100 feet away from our school. So, that's the second thing we'd like to talk about. We're going to switch back gears, back to safety, but we also wanted to talk about the buildings and the safety of those too. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chrissy M. Stutz. I live at 34 True Street here in Revere, right by the high school, and I teach fourth grade at the Beachmont School. As a Revere resident, active voter, and educator, I want to thank you for your time tonight, but I also want to talk about our health and safety crisis in our schools. Now, when we as educators say health and safety crisis, we're talking about violence in many forms. We're not just talking about physical violence. I know that's the stuff that we see on the news, and that's what's more obvious, and obviously more scary when we see it. But there's a lot more happening that we're not seeing publicly that's just as important. We're talking about our children in schools feeling unsafe, and sometimes truly being unsafe, physically, mentally, and emotionally. We're talking about our children witnessing other kids being unsafe, our children witnessing other kids in distress, and taking that upon themselves. And I know that we're sometimes talking about children or young adults, they're kids, even if they're 18. I know you mentioned that earlier, that they're young adults. Yes, they're older than my nine-year-old students, of course, and they have more responsibility and more wherewithal, but they're still kids, and they're our kids, and they are being hurt in our schools. Now, we're talking also about their feelings, their feelings of anxiety, their feeling depressed, their feeling of emotional suffering, and fear. I cannot tell you how many of my students have talked to me about being afraid in school. Now, as a fourth-grade teacher, in my experience in fourth grade, I've seen the effects of trauma on kids. In my personal classroom, in the last few years, I've only been in Revere for about seven years now, I have personally been hit, screamed at, had kids swear at me and throw things. I've had to evacuate my classroom, I've had to body-block students from hurting other kids. They're nine. They're nine. We can do things to stop that before it happens. We can do things. It's not a big secret how we do that. It's not a big mystery. We need more school psychologists, nurses, BCBAs, social workers, wraparound service providers, special educators, teachers, full-time paraprofessionals. And we have to make this place, this city, our city, a place that those people want to work and stay. And we have to make schools. We have to make our schools places that people want to work. We do that in a variety of ways, and we have a number of proposals that will help people want to stay there and stay working here in Revere. But I also just want to focus back on our students. In all those instances that I mentioned, for me, myself, as a teacher with my kids in my classroom, not a single one of those instances was about me. Every single one of them was about a child suffering, a child in need, and those needs not being met. And we can change that. We can change that before it gets to the point of needing security and metal detectors and being afraid for our lives. We can change it. We can fix this. Whenever those instances happened, it happened in front of all of my other students, which I know other teachers here have talked about as well. And then those students then feel upset, and worried, and afraid. I am one of their trusted adults, as we all are. As one of their trusted adults, I feel grief whenever these kinds of events happen. I'm mourning the inadequacy of our district's approach to taking care of our kids. Now, how can we take care of our kids? Like I mentioned, hire more people with training, make this place a place that people want to work and people want to stay working at, and give those services, that attention that our kids need and deserve, give it to our kids. I want to end by saying that our students, our children, are good people. They have so much potential, and we believe all kids can learn. What we're talking about are behaviors that are cries for help. On behalf of our children, I implore you to take those cries for help and our concerns seriously. How can we afford not to? Thank you.
Could I just get a quick raise of hands about the number of people we have left that want to speak? Okay, so we're going to cap it there, 1, 2, 3, 4, we're going to cap it right there. Okay, then we're going to move on to the next motion. Ma'am, go right ahead.
Thank you very much. My name is Andrea Aiselman. I live on Shirley Street in Winthrop, and I have been a science teacher in Revere for 17 years. I'm also a mom of two little girls. I've worked in all three middle schools. I'm one of those lucky ones that's gotten to move around a little bit and seen different administrations, different teachers, different teams. And I will say that over my 17 years, I have been hit, I have been sexually harassed, I have been tripped, I have been verbally assaulted, just like you've heard before. And on a day-to-day basis, I've broken up weekly fights, yeah, just about every week for years. But since COVID, it's been harder. And with lockdowns, it's harder. This last lockdown that you've already heard about, I was in a closet on the floor with 15 students who don't speak English. And I kept saying, "Está bien, está bien, es un práctica, es solo un práctica." What I didn't know is that the student who made the call was in my room with me. And my kids, some of them knew, and we had to figure that out. When teachers see a potential problem, things often get brushed off, but that student who had been in the room with me, we'd been working with their parents, we'd been working with administration, we'd been working with guidance, for months. That student had been on our radar for months. And then it escalated to more. When teachers see a problem, we are the first line of defense for our students. We're the ones who work with them, we're the ones who know our classrooms, we're the ones who know our hallways, we're the ones who know our schools, we're the ones who know each other. Yes, you could bring in security. I love our SROs. I work with Sergeant Nicola Singer, Officer Brennis, and Charlie. They do an amazing job building community. But we're the ones who know the kids. When something goes wrong, we are often treated like we are overreacting, like we're saber rattling, but over and over again, you will see that every time we say, "Something's going to happen," sadly, it often does. This kind of work that we do with students, when we are being verbally assaulted, when we are being physically assaulted, when we are being sexually harassed in front of other students, and when we're watching other students deal with this too, that takes time away from our classroom, that takes time away from our from our classroom, that takes time away from our teaching, that takes time away from all of those other kids, those 99% who weren't part of the fight. They lost out and they always lose out. And we are the ones who are always working for them and our kids who are making the bad decisions too. Our kids deserve better. Without clear policies, when something goes wrong, when I get hit, it's on me, right? Maybe I wasn't teaching well enough, maybe I wasn't taking care of the students well enough, maybe I didn't have my eyes on them, maybe that kiddo who decided to choke himself to the point of falling out of his chair, maybe I should have been standing right next to him rather than teaching the other 23 students in the room. It's always on us. And so why don't you listen, not just you, but especially the school committee, listen to us? A year ago, we came to them and said, "Hi, we have a safety issue." We've been saying this for years. We have safety issues. We need something done. You need to listen to us. We have a proposal in our negotiations right now, which is actually just asking for a committee, for our school committee, to listen to us officially. Because when something is going to go wrong, we're the ones who know it. What I am here to say is I am proud to work in Revere. I love working in Revere. I love my colleagues in Revere. I even have wonderful relationships with administrators in this district. But we need to be listened to, and I appreciate it so much that you have us here today because we are being listened to by all of you. So thank you very much.
My name is Leanna Del Greco, Salisbury, Massachusetts. Members of the City Council, thank you for hearing us this evening and showing your support for Revere teachers. It is sincerely appreciated. I am a sixth grade social studies teacher at Garfield Middle School. I'm also a former RPS student myself. Go Patriots. So tonight, I'm going to be highlighting the specific concerns about the dire conditions of the Garfield Middle School. At Garfield, our kids always come first, are at the forefront of every decision we make at GMS. Everything we do is for them, and tonight is no different. GMS, on average, has about 600 students and 65 staff members on a floor and a half of a four-story building. It's crowded. We are beyond capacity and out of space. At present, we have about 10 teachers traveling classroom to classroom. Some are even traveling from one end of our school to the other. This leaves our students in classrooms or in hallways unattended and unsafe. I have personally experienced the effects of our overcrowded and understaffed school. My classroom is at the end of a hallway and next to a stairwell that is used at every transition during the day. I am often standing outside my classroom welcoming my students into my room. However, I am also often one of only two teachers regularly outside our doors at the end of the hall. And it's not because teachers aren't doing their jobs, it's because so many of them are traveling classroom to classroom where they can't get to my end of the hall quick enough because the hallways are so congested. Last year alone, I broke up at least five fights in my end of the hallway, more fights than I have ever had in my 10 years working at Revere Public Schools. During a fire drill last year, I was leading my sixth graders down the staircase next to my room, along with the seventh and eighth graders who were in neighboring classrooms. As we slowly walked down the very crowded stairwell, another teacher and I noticed the only Garfield Elementary School teacher on our side of the building was trying to manage her kindergarten class down the same stairwell. Excuse me. Sorry. I lost my place. She was trying to manage her kindergarten class down the stairs amongst towering middle schoolers alone. There were too many people trying to get down this one stairwell, and our smallest students were getting swallowed by the crowd. And yet, believe it or not, we are still understaffed. We are still seeking for teachers for our honors classes, as well as still waiting to fill ELL and math positions that have been vacant since last year. We want nothing more than to fill these positions and provide our students with every opportunity to succeed in our school. But what happens if we do fill these positions? Where do these teachers go? Where do those classes go? Our administrative team has worked tirelessly to configure teacher schedules and classroom locations to best fit our students' needs, making them move the least amount and the teachers more. However, even in their best efforts, we are still constrained by the ever shrinking space we have. I implore the members of the City Council and members of the school committee that are here tonight to please take these concerns seriously and address the issues properly. We are coming to you now with these issues at Garfield Middle School because we know that these issues could cause serious harm in the future, but these issues are avoidable. Please do not let these concerns fall on deaf ears like they have at RHS. And please take action to make sure that all teachers, staff, and students have a safe and healthy working and learning conditions at Garfield Middle School. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing from us tonight. My name is Michelle Irvin. I live in Lynn, but I am an ELL educator at the high school, and I'm also one of the co-presidents of the Revere Teachers Association. We wanted to end tonight by reading a statement our executive board wrote and endorsed earlier today in response to a very disturbing letter from the superintendent. "We think it is relevant for the City Council to be made aware of the union busting and unlawful tactics by the current school leadership. Her letter to the RTA co-presidents, we believe, is emblematic of the lack of dignity and respect for educators the school administration often exhibits. We will forward our response to all of you with links to the original communications." In it, the superintendent essentially directs both me and the other RTA co-president from talking with the press about the current crisis facing our schools. Despite being unlawful of the superintendent, it should also be self-evident as to why silencing the voices of educators is not a productive response to the crisis at hand. This is, this is the response that we wrote. Dr. Kelly, we are in receipt of your letter dated September 8th titled "Statements Regarding Revere Public Schools." After reviewing it, the RTA finds it troubling, offensive, and unlawful. We find the claims that the RTA has been knowingly spreading misinformation or false statements baseless and tone deaf. More concerning are the clear implications of discipline and retaliation for our co-presidents simply for engaging in protected activity, speech, and advocacy for our staff and our students. This is illegal and will not be tolerated by the RTA. The RTA wholeheartedly stands by its statements and those our representatives have made over the past few weeks. You claimed our co-president was spreading false information to the media when she stated, "I can't say whether they were knocked unconscious. I can say that I also saw the video, and anybody else who saw the video saw that the staff member, that our administrator, was hit in the face, head knocked out against a locker, and fell on the floor." Our co-president stated nothing other than the observable facts she witnessed. If you contend that she did not witness someone getting knocked unconscious, well, this statement confirms precisely what she saw. Everyone is free to view the video and reach their own conclusions. I do not think it is productive to continue what has become a semantic argument. We are facing, we are facing a broad systemic crisis in our schools, and splitting hairs will not solve it. We will not apologize for speaking the truth. We will not apologize for finally shining a public spotlight on the ongoing crisis on our schools. We will not be intimidated or deterred from advocating for our members or the students we serve. Your letter is the anti-thesis of the democratic principles Revere Public Schools is intended to foster and grow. It represents clear interference with our ability to advocate for our working and learning conditions, the effects of which would have an obvious chilling effect on the RTA engaging in further protected activity, speech, and advocacy. As such, we demand you resend your letter by 5:00 PM Tuesday, September 10th, or the RTA will be forced to file an unfair labor and prohibited practice charge with the Labor Board and demand any and all other additional appropriate relief. It is important to note that the RTA has already had to file two unfair labor practice charges against the district, one for interference with protected concerted activity, which the DLR only last week issued this complaint in favor of our charge, and another for retaliation against one of our officers. The administration needs to stop its unlawful behavior now. We should be focusing on common sense solutions to reduce the instances of violence in our schools and how we should best protect our students and staff, and we hoped that your communication to us would have been on the substantive issues. We welcome this discussion at our upcoming negotiations. Thank you.
You sure you want to follow that?
I gotta follow that now.
No. This is gonna be the last speaker, then we're gonna move to the next motion, everybody.
Okay. My name is Ralph DeChico, 49 Washington Street. I'm here as a parent. My daughter just graduated Revere High, and all I can say is thank God. Unfortunately, I feel bad, and my son is a freshman, but at least he has the right head, he has the parents behind him, and he knows how to do the right thing. I wanted to say one thing. I feel bad for the teachers, especially up Revere High School. They have no backing. They are, when they signed up to be a teacher, it did not say in their requirements that they had to be a social worker, a referee, a parent, a caregiver. They were going there to educate our children. We want to drop our children off to school to get an education. They have to do over and above what they're supposed to do. Our students, it's, I know COVID has brought a lot more problems. This has been going on a lot longer than COVID. This starts with these kids in kindergarten. I can see, speak for this firsthand. I was the PTO president at an elementary school for over 10 years. I saw kids as little as kindergarten. This is where the kids needed to start getting the help. Unfortunately, these kids were just getting pushed on, pushed on. So what do you think is gonna happen when they come to the high school? It's gonna escalate. It's gonna get worse. It's gonna get worse. It's gonna get worse. And why do you think we cannot retain teachers in this city? This is the main reason why we can't retain teachers. Another thing, we need to be proactive and not reactive. This, this has been an outcry for many years. I am, I am upset that the administration, whoever it has been, has been worried about dealing with cell phones for the past two years and not safety and health of our children. I, I don't care what side you are on cellphone usage, but safety, health is more important for our students, and that has been forgotten. I would love to see our administrators stay in the high school classrooms for a week, not come in for an hour and just evaluate the teachers. Come in there for a week. Stay there for a week's period of time, unannounced. Come in there and see what these teachers have to deal with. Take a look at it. It, it's, and, and how many things are not reported and go untold that we don't know about? You know? Yeah, you know what? I'm glad that kids, some of these kids had cell phones. We got to see how bad that one was. If these kids did not have those cell phones, we wouldn't have seen the extent of that. So I commend, I commend the students that did that. Yeah, if they want to go on TikTok, but that's not the thing. This was proof that what is going on in the schools. We need to stop this. Whatever needs to be done, needs to be done. We need to think outside the box. We need to think outside the box. We do not want this to escalate any further. We need to stop this, move forward, and make our children safe in all grades in our, in our public schools here in the city of Revere. We are not in a foreign country. We are in Revere, Massachusetts, in the United States of America.
Counselors, what is, what is the will for this motion? Do we want to vote? Do we want to send it to subcommittee? Do we want to place it on file?
Thank you, Mr. President. On the, on the motion itself, I, I think we need to hear more where the teachers stand on it. I think we're getting a little bit of a, not a mixed message. I hear the message sounding clear, but the message between outsides, resources, metal detectors, these are decisions that we can't vote on without your support, and, and I think we need to put more teeth into it before we make a decision like that.
Counselor, I couldn't agree more. I am so thankful that you all showed up because nobody knows about what's going on with teachers better than teachers do. Nobody knows what's going on in school better than you guys. I would like to put this motion into the committee of the whole subcommittee, and that way we can craft it and amend it, because I know, I can tell you right off the bat, I want to remove Revere High School and put all Revere Public Schools in the motion. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. And maybe when we do have a committee as a whole, maybe we should invite the administration to come up along with the teachers. And maybe you can ask your questions while they're sweeping all the problems under the rug.
Would a mem- Is there, is there a point of someone that I can contact directly to communicate to you about meetings? Because this, this is exactly what we need to continue to do, and that's why I put 30 to 60 days, let's revisit this, because it's really time that we do something about it. I'm gonna quote one of the SROs that spoke in the Safety and Security Subcommittee. He said, "When's the last time we had a fire? Because we have fire prevention. So let's start preventing fights. Let's start preventing drugs. Let's start preventing vaping. Let's start preventing all of that."
Mr. President, thank you for the leeway. I would like to suggest that we're, we all have teachers in different schools. Maybe we could have someone in quietly, because we don't want you to get in trouble, but maybe we should take down all the incidences that happen in the schools and come up with a list of, you know, a fight, or you, a teacher getting hit or spit on, or whatever it is. We should have all the incidents on paper, instead of just come up and telling us, because I've gone through the same thing. Maybe we should have a list of some, you know, all the incidences.
Counselor, if I may, I actually did that last year. I reached out and I got a lot of anonymous information from teachers, from parents, from students, and I made a list. And it was disgusting, to say the least, about what's going on inside the schools. That was last year. Okay, so now we're here a year later discussing the same things.
Well, Mr. President, excuse me.
Absolutely.
But I, maybe we should have it publicly submitted.
I will not release the names of the people who gave it to me in fear of retaliation.
You don't have to. But I mean, maybe we should have it publicly so people can see the incidences at Garfield School, the incidents that happened in Revere High School. You don't have to put names on it, but this is what happened on September 25. You know, this is what happened on January 3rd, whatever it is. But I, I think if we can compile a, a list, maybe we'll see, you know, people will see the devastation of these problems that are going on in every school. So, thank you.
I just, I just, I'm sorry. I've been getting text messages and Facebook messages from educators the entire time. And I just want to share one thing. I'm not gonna say who sent it to me. That's not my style. But one of the big issues, and this isn't the only person that's, I've heard this from, is, is the loss of the Seacoast School. There was a lot of kids that were in that program. They're now mixed in with general population, so to speak. So, you know, I, maybe we start working on coming back with some sort of program like that. Does any other counselor wish to speak on the issue? If not, I would like to put this into the committee of the whole subcommittee. Counselor Kelly.
I, I would just like to recognize the co-president, because I believe that the log that Counselor McKenna was speaking about is something that you've already proposed in your plan.
Yes.
And you've been asking for that, correct?
Yes. It's one of our main proposals is to have a log exactly like that, and it has not been, it's fallen on deaf ears. No, it has not even been discussed.
Mr. President, sorry for the, thank you for the leeway. Maybe we should just have, you know, if you want to call me and we can do this anonymously and you can send whatever you want to myself or one of the counselors that you feel, you feel trusted with, that you trust, then, I mean, we would be glad to receive that. So, but let's compile it. I'll do it. You know, I'll, I'll be the one, if you want to just bring it- You know, I'll, I'll be the one, if you want to just bring it on, um, so.
Thank you, Counselor. We're going to put this into the committee of the whole subcommittee.
Counselor item number 13, motion presented by Council President Cogliandro that the mayor and superintendent of public schools be requested to begin exploring the cost to install metal detectors at Rivera High School and that the findings be reported to the city council within 30 to 60 days.
Permission to speak from the chair. Thank you. Again, this is a request to begin exploring what this is. This is not in any way the city council saying, "Do this immediately." We want to explore these things because we know we don't know everything. We want to have a conversation with everyone. What I do want to say is that when you think about metal detectors, the first thing that we all think about is guns, let's be honest. That's the first thing we think about, okay? Guns, knives, those are the first things. But I also want to state that I feel that if you, a kid with a lighter walks through, then we eliminate, might eliminate a smoking problem. And I know that a lot of the issues we're having right now revolve around vapes. Okay, so a lot of the vapes would be detected by that. So again, this is just all ideas that were given to me. I'm advocating for the public that, that asked me to advocate on their behalf, and I think that it would make a safer environment, uh, for, for any school that would require one. We can get portable ones. This would go hand in hand with getting more security staff, security, not security slash translators, security staff. So with that, I'd like to open it up to any counselors wishing to speak. Let's put this into the, uh, let's put this into the public, uh, excuse me, the Committee of the Whole as well, so we can put these both in there. Okay, Committee of the Whole.
Counselor item number 14, motion presented by Council President Cogliandro that the following proposed ordinance amendment be ordered to a public hearing. An ordinance further amending section 2.03.050, open meetings of the revised ordinances of the city of Rivera, section one. Section 2.03.050e, open meetings is hereby amended by inserting the words "subcommittees of the" before the word "school."
Two-minute recess, please. Madam Clerk, the next motion, please.
Counselor item number 14, this was an ordinance further amending section 2.03.050, open meetings.
Permission to speak from the chair. Thank you. I did speak with multiple school committee members, and what I want to do before I get into this is explain for the, the public and for everybody what subcommittees are. Subcommittees are an opportunity for us to meet with a, a group smaller than a quorum so that we can discuss issues before they come to this very meeting. So with, there was a lot of talk about people upset about the recent Safety and Security Subcommittee for Schools. What many people didn't know is that it was scheduled at noon so that the SROs would be able to attend that meeting. And I think that where the school committee already has subcommittees, you know, during the day sometimes where they always start no earlier than 5:00 PM for their regular meetings, this is essentially just us getting this, that what they already practice on the books. Now, with that said, I would also like to add city council subcommittees to this list. That way we could handle more business. So let's say we have some business in elder affairs and Chairman Garino Sawaya would like to make it accessible for the seniors at the senior center to be bused here. We could do it at 11:00 AM, 12:00 PM in the morning. The good news is that if anybody in the public wants to speak on that issue, they can do so at the next city council meeting. So there is no way that we're going to be hiding these motions, no way that we're not handling business with public input. And I do think that it's a better way for us to handle, uh, business quicker. But we do have a lot of subcommittees that we need to hold, and we are confined to this 5:00 PM time. We had a Legislative Affairs Subcommittee today with Chairman Argenzio that took us an hour. You know, that's, that's one of the reasons we have a lot of business before us. So I would like to amend this, and we can vote on the amendment, to not only add, so what we're doing is, school committee is already exempt, so is the License Commission, so is the Elder Council. What I would like to do is add "subcommittees of the" before the word "school" committee. That way, subcommittees are exempt, not the school committee, uh, as a whole meeting. I would also like to add and amend this to say, uh, to the exemptions, "subcommittees of the city council." And I will, obviously, I'm looking forward to a discussion on that, how you all feel about that. And like I said, this is to help us handle business, and it will not stop any public participation. As you could see tonight, the room was completely packed to capacity. We had to have a fire detail here, so we're definitely not shy about having public participation. But any, any counselors wishing to speak on this? Counselor Kelly.
My only concern, with the exception being maybe the elder affairs or the seniors, you gave the example of that meeting, subcommittee meeting being held at 11:00 AM, which I'm totally fine with. But I think maybe the other subcommittees of the city council, really all the nuts and bolts are discussed in these subcommittee meetings. It's really where we, most of the discussion, um, gets kind of sorted out. And I don't want to, um, alienate the public from those meetings, and I think maybe if we have them before 5:00, we might be doing that. I understand they could still come to the public hearing, but if they come to the public hearing without hearing or being at the subcommittee meeting, they might be missing a lot of what was discussed in the subcommittee meeting. So that's my only concern, but I do agree that we could get a lot more business handled if we were able to do it after 5:00. So I guess I'm kind of, I kind of have mixed feelings about it. So, um, just how I feel about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors wishing to speak? I would like to take a roll call on the amendment. Counselor Garino Sawaya.
I'm actually taking offense to the elder affairs committee. You saying that they're not important, Counselor Kelly?
No, no.
Because that's how I'm taking it right now.
Oh, no. I meant that if, like, I could understand why maybe a group of seniors would rather be bused at 11:00 AM in the morning than 6:00 PM at night or, or 5:00 PM at night. He gave the example of the seniors, so I was just thinking it might be more convenient for the seniors to meet earlier in the day, but I'm not sure if the working public that's going to a job, they're working nine to five, it might not be convenient for them to get to a meeting at 11:00 AM in the morning. The meetings taking place after 5:00 o'clock might be more convenient for the rest of the public. I'm just, I'm saying that it's totally convenient for the seniors. I'm totally okay with that, and I can understand why they might want to have their meetings prior to 5:00 PM in the evening.
I just took offense to it. I'm like, wait a minute, why?
Oh, you didn't hear me right.
Excuse me. Points made. I'm gonna, I'm gonna nip this right in the bud.
Didn't hear me right.
Excuse me. All your communication's going to go through the chair. This ends now. Thank you. So I have an amendment. Mr. DeChico, go ahead.
I just want to point a clarification. My mind is a little fuzzy right now. At subcommittee meetings, can the general public come in and comment on them?
Yes.
Okay. Now, the question, and you know where I stand on this, um, is there any, any way I really, and I'm a big proponent, I testified at, oh, Ralph DeChico, 49 Washington Street, I testified at city, at city, at the State House that what we should do for, for equal access to everyone, and this would be a great point for it, if we're going to move these meetings before 5:00 o'clock, that we should do a hybrid, try and do a hybrid component to this. Because we do have people that are going to work, if this goes to a hybrid and there's a Zoom component, and that people are working that want to take part in this, they're allowed to speak over the Zoom. We do have meetings in the city right now that are, that are on hybrid or Zoom right now. So I would be in favor, if you're moving these meetings early, that you would add a hybrid component to it. Like I've always stated, nothing good came out of COVID, but we've seen what technology can do. So that's, that would be how I would be in favor of it, that if you move these subcommittee meetings to earlier in the day, that you add a hybrid component to them.
Thank you, sir. So I, at this point, I would like to reiterate the amendment that I'd like to make, and if it passes, we can go from there. I would like to add the city council subcommittees, or subcommittees of the city council, worded correctly that way, uh, to this motion, to the ordinance as well. Madam Clerk, if you would call a roll on the amendment.
On the proposed amendment to the motion, Counselor Argenzio.
Could I have a clarification of what we're voting on?
Sure. So I'll read the ordinance again. An ordinance further amm, and this is just a proposal, this would need to go to a public hearing first if the city council were to do anything with it. An ordinance further amending section 2.03.050, open meetings of the Rivera Revised Ordinances, section one. Section 2.03.050e, open meetings is hereby amended by inserting the words "subcommittees of the" before the word "school." And Counselor, Council President Cogliandro's amendment would be to also include "subcommittees of the city council" as an exception, um, to the open meeting ordinance that is currently on the books.
So this would open the door to have meetings earlier?
Earlier than 5:00 PM for the city council subcommittees.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments or anything? All right, let's, let's try the roll call again.
On the proposed amendment, Counselor Argenzio.
No.
No. Counselor Janino is absent. Counselor Garino Sawaya?
Nope.
No. Counselor Haas?
No.
No. Counselor Yarmio?
No.
No. Counselor McKenna?
Nope.
No. Counselor Novoselfsky is absent. Counselor Silvestri?
No.
No. Counselor Zambudo is absent. And Council President Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, the amendment, the proposed amendment fails.
Then I would like to take a roll, well, actually, this will go to a public hearing. So let's order it to a public hearing as, as is.
Calendar item number 15, motion presented by Council McKenna that the mayor requests 311 to use the emergency alert system to notify residents of the West Nile virus cases in Rivera and address ways in which residents can take precautions to be safe from mosquitoes.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I've been getting a lot of calls. People are very concerned about what's going on, and I know this is on the city web, but a lot of people don't get the city web. So I just would like a robo-call or some sort of call just to announce that, you know, they're spraying every night or they're spraying once a week and, or they're, and, and this is what you should do, is you should make sure that your windows are closed and ba, 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 whatever it is. So I just would like more information to, to be passed on to the residents because there is a big concern. And I think there are two cases in Rivera, one case in Winthrop. So, thank you very much. That's it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Yarmio.
Mr. President, thank you so much, and thank you for counsel, to Counselor McKenna for this wonderful motion.
Thank you.
I want to say, you know, earlier, at the onset of our day, I know it feels like we've been here for like 10 hours, but, uh, we had the discussion about translation. Unfortunately, you know, we heard from the administration last, or two weeks ago, that they didn't want translation and interpretation services. This feels like something that really needs translation and interpretation services. You know, we tried to pass a motion, most of you were in favor, but I didn't want to put anyone in a tough predicament of taking a hard vote on, uh, translation, um, opposition from the administration. But maybe we can amend this just so that we can direct the mayor to make all communications on this particular topic, um, available in Arabic, Italian, and Spanish, and that'd be great. So there's a motion to amend.
Mr. President, also maybe put it on Rivera TV like we do.
I think they should. It's a-
Yeah.
-public health, you know?
So-
Very important.
And that's, that's where you can come in with the translations, Counselor.
Thank you. I mean, it'd be great if they could do it on the website, on really all modes of communication. I know the, I follow the Facebook. I really only see a monolingual Facebook for, for a city that's 51% or maybe over 51% non-monolingual English. It's really hard to stomach that particularly public health things are being largely ignored.
Anyone else? On the motion as amended, all in favor, all opposed?
Counselor item-
Point of inquiry. Did we amend the motion?
The clerk just amended the motion.
Oh, you did? Did we take the vote?
All motion as amended. We don't necessarily-
Got it.
-need a vote, which is a general discussion.
Perfect. Thank you. Sorry, Mr. President.
Counselor item number 16, motion presented by Counselor Silvestri that the mayor requests the director of public health to appear before the city council to give a presentation on the FY25 opioid trust fund budget.
Counselor Silvestri.
Uh, motion self-explanatory. I know we appropriated some money last time at the last meeting. It was another long night, so I didn't want to delay the meeting by asking any questions on that evening, so, um, I'd just like to get some clarification. Thank you.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 17, motion presented by Counselor Silvestri that the mayor requests the director of public health to appear before the city council to provide an update on the opioid abatement funds, the focus groups, resident input, and how the Nalox Box's program is doing so far.
Counselor Silvestri.
Same. Motion speaks for itself. Thank you, Mr. President.
I've been notified that Lauren Buck will be able to do a presentation on October 7th at our meeting.
Excellent. Thank you.
Point of personal privilege?
Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to wish Counselor Chris Janino a speedy recovery, as I'm sure most of, all the council would. Get well soon, my friend. We'll see you soon. Thank you.
Back to the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered? Continue. Unless there are any other points of personal privilege, this meeting is adjourned. Everyone have a great night. Thank you for everyone who came tonight. Everyone have a great night, thank you for everyone who came tonight.